Notice and then we'll get started. Just doing a sound check. I can see Brittany on the screen. Can you hear us okay? Okay. Greg?
Yes.
Anne?
Yep. Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna read the notice before we get started here. Notice the whole teleconference meeting is pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D David 021. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, by action of the school board of the Pelican Rapids School District, all future meetings of the Pelican Rapids School Board will be conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D David 021, meetings by telephone or other electronic means until further notice. One or more board members may participate by telephone or other electronic means. In accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D David 021, members of the public are not permitted to attend this meeting due to the current health pandemic. Persons may monitor this meeting from a remote location via Zoom. The link to this meeting will be posted on our district website. Public comment for school board meetings during opportunity for visitors to speak may be submitted as follows. And that'll be to Barbara Please email as B R I P L E Y at pelicanrapids.k12.mn.us. We're gonna call the meeting to order. 6:04. And the first item up, we have everybody in attendance, first item up will be Fledge of Allegiance. Everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice of all.
Welcome, everybody. First item up will be to approve the meeting agenda. We have a change in the agenda under business items. Item C, where it says canvas election results. They are not available. So C will be setting a special meeting to canvas the election results. And outside of that, is there anything else to change or add? Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mike.
Yeah.
Second by Anne. Any discussion on the agenda? There are no discussion. All those favor approving the agenda as listed, signify by saying aye, and this will be by roll call. Anne?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Brittany?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Brenda?
Hi.
Aye. Motion carries. Now, opportunity for visitors to address the board. Do we have anything, Mark? Okay, we will move on. And we have a couple of acknowledgements here. Kadar Ibrahim, all-state soccer, and an acknowledgement of teaching staff for the extra time and effort due to COVID-19. I'm gonna elaborate a little bit more. Brian or Barrett? You gonna do the soccer one?
Sure. This was the first time Pelican honor on its head of all-state soccer player. So congratulations to Kadar on that honor and great accomplishment for him and the team that helped him, you know, support to get this award, so congratulations to him.
We just wanna thank the teaching staff for all their time, effort, adapting, making changes to their teaching. Put a lot of time, hard work, a lot of stress so far this year, so we wanna thank them for all the work that they have done so far. Yeah, their dedication has been very impressive.
Yep.
They wanna be here in class. I think they know they have an important purpose to fill in this community and we made it this far, so we've got the rest of the year left, so can't tire out too quickly.
Every teacher, it's like it's their first year teaching again with so many new things and they're going above and beyond power of duty to do it, so we thank them.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks. We're gonna move on to administrative reports. We'll start with Mr. Derek Nelson, elementary principals and activities director.
Enrollment, we're at 4/28. Down a few from October. We have a few families that have moved to the cities here recently. So that's why it was dropped. We're gonna hire Casey Kloosted as a part-time preschool parent. She is replacing Katie Thorson. Like to thank Katie for her work with us. She is going to start a daycare of her own, so we wish her good luck in her new business. In the donations, we have a donation to the elementary special ed from the Backstone Family fundraiser and the Sam Tastic raised quite a bit of money and thank them for that very generous donation to the elementary special ed. We've completed three fire drills so far. It was so nice last week, we decided to get one more in before the snow flies again. And this week we'll be doing a lockdown and shelter-in-place drills as well. We're required to get five fire drills in and five lockdown and shelter-in-place drills as well for the year. October 30th was pajama day at elementary. And each classroom had their own little gathering since they couldn't get together as a group this year and do a normal parade. And it seemed like it was a big success in the grades. Title night this year is gonna be a little different. There's gonna be an online title night since we can't bring people together. So they're gonna have different things that students and parents can do online. And then they're gonna get, be able to see who's logged in and done them, and there'll be different rewards for the people that click in, the students, and do the activities for the title night, and that'll be next week. Next Monday, we have a workshop at elementary. And Lakes Country is coming out to help us work on our curriculum review to start the process. This was in the school improvement plan from three years ago that was written in that we need to do, so we're working, we started last year, but with COVID interruption, we are gonna pick up again on working on our curriculum review and looking at the needs of the elementary, what we need to work on for our curriculum. Parent teachers conferences on November 23rd to 24th. And these will all be by Zoom or phone call. And parents are signing up online for a time to meet with their teacher for the conferences. For activities, junior high girls basketball did get started today. We are gonna meet as a conference to figure out what we do for fans. As you know, our elementary gym is fairly small. And we probably can't have the regular amount of fans that we normally do because of seating capacity. And so we're hoping across the conference that we can have a rule across the conference, whether it's home parents are allowed in. So it's just the same all the way across. So we've been meeting this week as ADs to hopefully come up with something for junior high girls basketball. Everyone basically plays in a smaller facility, so we're not alone in that situation. Football last regular season game is this Wednesday. Next Tuesday will be the first playoff game. And then 21st of November. And then November 27th would be the final section championship game for this season. Volleyball playoff dates are December 1st, 3rd, 5th, 8th, and 11th for the volleyball dates. And the Minnesota State High School League tonight, if we pass it Form A. What Form A does is it allows us to receive money from the state. And that money then can be used to help offset activity fees for families that cannot afford to pay their activity fees. It's money that we get through a grant from the high school league to help pay for that. And we've received this for several years in a row, but we have to apply every year for that grant, so. Any questions?
No. No, I haven't got any questions.
One football. Volleyball was supposed to play Holly tournament. That has been moved to next Friday due to Holly having to be out for a period of time. They had a player test positive, was on the bus, so their whole team is quarantined. But so, so far so good. You know, hats off to our coaches, players, doing the right things, and we've been able to keep things rolling, so good job to the coaches, students, and parents for keeping and holding their kids accountable for their actions.
See anybody waving you down, so. Let's go with Mr. Martinez for the finance report.
Perfect, thank you, everyone. I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen here for you guys. Okay, perfect. So in terms of the finance, my apologies as I don't have the treasurer's reports ready. I've been out ill for the last week or so, so today was my first day back in the office. What I do have for you guys is the ADM projection report. This is the first step in starting the budget for fiscal year 22. Essentially gives us an estimate and a projection for what our pupil counts are gonna be, and then from here we start projecting revenue based on that. So essentially, the first week in October, we submit the MARS reports to the state. MARS is all of our student accounting, where we track every student for this projected year 2021. This is what we have. We have 864 pupil units. But we are actually looking into the projection, so if you see the numbers, essentially our method is we take the current year and then we plug it in a year down, so you can follow each class. For example, this kindergarten class is gonna be first grade next year. And essentially, we'd look at all of our data in kindergarten and then we try to project how many kids we're gonna have in the kindergarten class. So we're projecting about 60, which is a very close measurement. We find out more after we do kindergarten roundup, what we will actually have. And that normally happens in the spring. So with all that said, we're gonna have, we are projecting to have 859 students. That's a little bit low, lower from what we, what we've had. And then essentially, the next step in this projection is for you guys to go ahead and pass a motion, so we can go ahead and and start building the budget on 849 students. Again, we always have a 10-student gap, and that is for fluctuation in students. Last year, we built the budget on 850. So not a lot of difference, but we always wanna keep that 10-student reserve for any changes in student enrollment. Any questions? Perfect, well, that's all I have for you guys. When we get to approve the ADM report, just go ahead and allow the district to use 849 students for the creation of next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. Okay, three more questions. For the 10 high school report. Okay, at the high school enrollment in November, we are at four, we have November here at 415. Students, high schools here with 419, lots of students, couple students moved to other towns, so. PLC's workshop today. PLC's, we had a staff meeting, target meetings, and then waiting for to curricular planning today. It was a good day for workshop, a good day of meetings, and a good day to get some trades done and planning done. Tornado drill, did, completed tornado drill last week. We didn't walk through it, we were not gonna have all the kids. So we have the high school tornado drill, just discussed, we walked through it. And then it all verbal. Parent teacher conferences are November 16th. They'll be then via Zoom or a phone call. That's what we'll do. Conferences here at the high school in the fall. MHS, Minnesota Honor Society, elections coming up. Conducting students, we'll share with them at the next meeting. And we're gonna hold that acquaintance at a time that's for only people that contend are the parents of the students, so I think there'll be less than 20 people at that point. Drivers' education, written test, MOU tonight for approval is forced. We can have the written test for driver's training here. Kids going to deal for us to take the test that we can hold in here. So that's what the MOU is all about. Distance learning also is on the agenda tonight. COVID team is recommending you consider distance learning before and after the holiday break due to the increase of social family gatherings and holidays that we're not able to control. So very concerned about that. The number last week, the COVID number, the positive case number of the county was at 50.7. Right now, we're looking at an increase, the number will be greater than 50.7 this Thursday. I think right now will be in the 60s. County numbers, one indicator that we use, look at our learning model. So when we look at in-house, we apparently have three elementary staff that are in quarantine. We have three high school staff that are in quarantine at this time. Elementary students, as of today, we have 39 in quarantine, and high school, we have 23. So those are kind of our numbers right now. Our COVID team is recommending that we continue with their learning model as of last week. Again, this is day to day, hour by hour. And we're trying to cover all areas. We are short on subs. Not a lot of subs on the list in the first place to stream this COVID. But we are making things work. So we start the morning. Ms. Nelson and I start the morning with Mrs. Willi, who arranges all the substitutes, and we end the day talking to her, seeing how we're doing. So it's a daily thing, but doing the best we can to cover and make things work. So one of the things is that we're looking at recommendation is one distance line, December 23rd to the 23rd, January 5th to 8th. I will be participating in the Honor to County Superintendent meeting with Hall of Health tomorrow at 10. We just lined up the meetings today. And that's going to be discussing how we're doing the numbers and what districts are thinking of future for learning model. If the numbers arrive. Most meetings this week are that. Snow days, first two snow days on the master calendar are e-learning days. Administrative team recommends all snow days are e-learning days for this year. And one thing we're concerned about is finding substitutes. Not that good thing. It's a concern of ours. So what we're thinking right now is, what we recommend is that we just keep things consistent. If it's a snow day, it becomes a e-learning day. We just keep things consistent right now. COVID related. So that, that's our recommendation. Yep. So any questions or concerns? Our COVID team talked about it, discussed it. We're really worried about parents. We're really trying to juggle not putting so much pressure on parents to find daycare, grandparents, daycare, finding coverage for kids, that's a concern of ours. We're trying to balance. We just feel there'll be an increase from Thanksgiving to around Christmas times, that's why we're being prepared for that. We're hoping right that we can get there before, that time before we got to the numbers.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Take my mask off, because I got a little reading here to do, so. Consent items. Next item on the agenda. Item A, approve board meeting minutes, October 5th and October 19th. Meetings. Item B, financial claims and October bills. C, treasurer's report. D, accept donations to the boys soccer, Alvin Cabal, $100. To ISD 548, Bell Bank, custom card donations, $45. Viking Elementary for Mittens, Fergus United Methodist Church, $100. To ISD 548, Community Ed, Alvin Cabal, $100. To SAD, American Legion Auxiliary, $75. To Viking Elementary, Wells Fargo Giving Fund, $21. The OMP Scholarship Fund, Minnesota National Bank, $100. Viking Elementary Special Ed, Baxter Family and Team Sam Tastic, $1,366. Scholarships in memory of Linda Iverson, Jerry and Gloria Wilm, $25. Viking Elementary, Wells Fargo Giving Fund, $18. Item E, personnel, accept the resignation of Katie Thorson as elementary parent effective 11/2 of 2020. Prove a medical leave for Tammy Hanson from December 15th, 2020 to approximately January 26th, 2021. Proven extended medical leave for Charlotte Seder through 11/25 of 2020. Hire Cassie Kloosted as elementary parent. Item F, approve the agreement with Lakes Country Service Co-op for new superintendent mentorship service for the 2020, 2021 school year. Approve the memorandum of understanding with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety to provide remote web-based knowledge testing. That's all I have on the consent items. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items. Motion by Mike, do we have a second? Second by Brenda. Any discussion on the consent items? No discussion, all those favor approving the consent items signify by saying aye, and I'll do a roll call. Brittany? Anne?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Brenda? Aye. Consent items carried. Next item off, business items. Approve all snow days to be e-learning days for the remainder of 2020, 2021 school year. Brian had gone over a little bit on that. Are you doing a motion and if there's discussion, then bringing up then, or? We have a motion by Brenda to approve all snow days to be learning days. Goes out here. Second by Anne. Okay. Do we have any discussion on the snow days, e-learning?
I'll speak up. I am against doing this. I'm probably the minority, which is fine, but I still feel that I need to speak up on it. I only have one personal reason why I'm against it, and mainly because I have to work on snow days, like a lot of people, and maybe unlike a lot of people. So it affects me personally, yet the other reason I'm against it is, and I understand, you know, Brian explained it very well, I get it. I was okay with the first two days, which is already in there. I am curious, on average, and I know every year is different, how many snow days we typically have. I try to think back, and I don't quite know if we've been more than four. I don't, like I said, I don't know. So yeah, to a point, looking at it that way, you could say, well, there's only four snow days, what's the big deal? But I look at it as, right now, we've taken so much from these kids. And my son already came home on the day we got out early and said, Mom, I have homework. Last year, during a snow day, we didn't have to do homework, why do we have to now? You know, so a fifth grader's mind is already looking at this as a negative. I tried to let him know, you got let out early, your teacher didn't have a lot of time with you, it'll be fine. And it wasn't just his reading, it was more, and that's fine, I'm not complaining. I just look at, you know, they're grasping all of this right now. And now we're saying, on a snow day, when sometimes that's time with their parents, time to relax, be a kid, watch a movie, we're saying, no, now you have to do school. And so I just look at everything that's been going on for kids now, and then the other thing that kinda makes me nervous, and I I trust their administration and I trust Trevor and Paul. I get nervous of, if everything is an e-learning day, are we gonna look at it as, you know, who cares, let's just have it a snow day, call it off. It's e-learning anyways, not a big deal, we don't have to make it up. And I'm not saying that people are gonna look at it that way. I'm nervous that it could get that way. So like I said, I'm probably the minority, but I just felt like I needed to say something just in case someone else never thought of it or was thinking the same thing. So I said my piece.
Thank you, Brittany. Anne or Greg? Any feedback? Part of the reason with subs is that we, that the way of the year, all longer with storm days and find subs or head of the sheet. Let's say we didn't have e-learning days on a snow day.
You know, so when we have a snow day, so we usually have a couple weeks for, and say, it's gonna be on the state. So make the days around it. We might just have to ask some staff to, if they have. Those appointments, you know, they'll make appointments on Mondays, which is what we're having to do.
I can't really hear you. Sorry.
On Mondays, we probably have to refer staff more, if we have like snow makeup days to maybe change their, if they had any like appointments, and try to change them. If we had a snow makeup day, that's what we would have to do if we went that route.
Were you able to hear that?
I just talked about this chair. If we had, if we went the route of making up snow days, then we would have to look at possibly asking staff to move their appointments if they possibly could to help itself with that situation. That's how we would try to solve that concern.
Right, so the snow days right now are built in to Mondays, if I'm not mistaken. So basically, we'd have a five-day week in the school, you know, so having an e-learning day keeps school on the same day, and it would just be remote.
Yeah. I agree with, I agree with Brittany too. You know, it's very hard, you know, the night before, we have snow coming in like what we had here earlier this fall. You know, it's very hard, you know, the night before, we have snow coming in like what we had here earlier this fall. What should we do, you know, we want to have school, we want kids here. If we can take the chance. Didn't start snowing, you know, it was like five-thirty or five o'clock when we made the decision to go, it wasn't snowing and about within a half hours started snowing. So then we had some kids come to school saying their roads weren't very good, like that's what's a concern, it's a safety concern. When it starts snowing, so yeah, it's something, it's nice to have that e-learning, to say we're going to e-learning instead of risking an accident. We don't want to lose anyone, we don't want a bus accident, we don't want any of our students are driving in any accident. So, you know, either way you look at it, we have snow makeup days, we just encourage our staff to, if you can move the appointments. To move, to move them. If possible. That can be hard for some staff to do that, depending on what their appointments are. You know, orthodontists, not a lot of people want to change those, you know, those are, they take a while. You can spend with them weeks, months. Can we see a lot of other districts? Yep, so if I understand, it's perm, I think, uh, all or mostly e-learning. But I know Morehead, that was in the paper, that Morehead went to e-learning and not having these snow days. Recommended to the class. Recommended last year. Yep, Underwood did it last year, so.
They're actually going, eliminating the snow days per se and having just e-learning days on those days when they aren't able to have in-person learning across the entire state.
I'm just looking more for this year due to COVID reasons. Now with, we have kids coming twice. Yeah, it wouldn't be three times, it would be twice to the school. Again, we want, want them here, but it's just another day for contact, things like that. I'm really worried just with COVID right now, our county numbers and our numbers going up in our community, they went up twenty-two in a week, so. Just those are concerns of this, how can we do this, you know, so we can. Make this the best situation we can, educate our kids the best way. And balancing COVID, I mean, that's what we're doing here.
I think we have some discretion too, is if we get a snowstorm or ice storm, we're not have the power out. I would assume, I would assume we wouldn't need to do it even in the that day.
Hopefully we don't have one of them. Agreed. Any other discussion? Hey, we have a motion in a second to approve all snow days to be e-learning days for the remainder of twenty-one, twenty, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. There are no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye and I'll do a by roll call again, Greg?
Hi.
Anne?
Hi.
Brittany?
No.
Mike? Brenda? Hi. Motion carries. Item B, approve self-imposed distance learning to the following days due to social gatherings during the holidays. December twenty-first through the twenty-third, so it's just on Christmas break. January fifth through January eighth. After the holiday break. Trying to touch a little bit on that. So do we have a motion?
Was there a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
I'm, I moved to. Have the mandated. E-learning days on the dates that. Chairperson John Cargill just mentioned.
So, distance learning for December twenty-first through the twenty-third and January fifth through the eighth.
Yes.
Motion by Greg, second by, who was that? Anne? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, I'll do a roll call again, Brittany?
Hi.
Anne?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Hi, Mike?
Hi.
Brenda? Motion carries.
With that, club bikes will be open on those days.
Okay.
As well as food delivery, we'll set up that. It will be out.
So stay tuned for details on those. Now that we've approved this, we'll do this. All right. Item C will be set a special meeting date for canvassing of election results. Mark, what is our deadline for that? Friday is the last day, canvas votes. And the Otter's office has recommended Friday, we will be meeting on Friday. This is something we could see. So that we can do by Zoom. On a Friday, does morning work for everybody? The only two short resolutions we need to read and then, then that should be the extent of the meeting. Go ahead, Anne.
Didn't hear Mike.
I said, I could be, even if I'm on the road, I can be available on my phone, so.
Friday morning works for me.
Are you thinking seven, seven-thirty? After seven-thirty works for me, I have to get the kids to school.
Eight, too late? Brittany is eight work, Anne is eight work, is Greg eight work?
Yes.
Anne? Couldn't hear you.
So?
You think so, or?
Yeah, I don't have my work calendar up in front of me.
Okay, Brittany?
Eight works.
Eight works? You're good to date? Brian, Mark? All right, I'll make a motion, we set the. Special meeting to canvass election results. Friday. November thirteenth at eight a.m. I made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg, any discussion on the meeting day? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the meeting day signify by saying aye. I'll do a roll call, Greg?
Hi.
Anne?
Hi.
Brittany?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Brenda? Hi. Meeting carries. Next item up, approve ADM projections for two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-two. It's a projection of the enrollment for next year. And like Mr. Martinez said, it's the first step to start the budget for next. Brenda made a motion to set the ADMs for eight forty-nine. Also, a second by Mike. Any discussion on setting the ADMs for eight forty-nine?
Want to put the exact, is it eight forty-nine exactly, Rudy?
It was eight forty-nine point three eight.
Yeah, go one forty-nine, it'll make, it'll round up easier when, when I start projecting revenue.
There are no discussion, all those in favor of setting the ADM. ADM is eight forty-nine, signify by saying aye, I'll do a roll call, Brittany?
Hi.
Anne?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Hi, Mike? Brenda? ADMs period. Next item up is approve resolution of the school board supporting Form A application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. And that was explained to us in, in Mr. Nelson's report. All entertaining motion?
Go ahead, Mike.
We have a motion by Mike. I will, Anne, a second by Anne? Okay. You're kind of cutting out there, that's why. Any discussion approving the resolution of the state high school league? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, Greg?
Hi.
Hold on a sec, we need to read, read our resolution. Yep. Okay. Yep, that's one on the internet, apologize for that. We still got a motion in a second, this is the resolution. So this is formed. Form A, a resolution of school board supporting Form A application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth who participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the district five forty-eight school board recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding. To assist school districts in recognizing, promoting and funding extracurricular participation. By high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, being resolved that the ballot grant of school board supports the district's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. For a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. Okay, this is the resolution, Greg, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Anne? Brittany?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Brenda? And yes, resolution carries. And next item up will be upcoming meetings. Of the MRE Annual Conference. Real proud, November fifteenth through the eighteenth, it's all virtual. Do we have anybody going to that? Mr. Parker's going. We have a special meeting and work session set for November eighteenth, two thousand twenty at six P.M. In that special meeting, again, will be the approval of sale of bonds. To discuss the flexible year, learning year, forty-week through two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. And we'll work out superintendent goals and the world's best workforce. We have a work session December seventh, two thousand twenty at six P.M. And a regular meeting December twenty-first, two thousand twenty at six P.M. Okay. Uh, next item up is going to be item ten, we're going to go into a closed session. To be a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D David one zero five subdivision three parentheses B for confidential legal advice relating to litigation involving the school district. And I'm going to read this. Before we go into a closed meeting. The next item on the agenda is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D David one zero five subdivision three parentheses B. Which allows the school board to go into closed session pursuant to attorney-client privilege. While in closed session, the school board will participate in a confidential discussion with legal counsel regarding lawsuits involving the school district. Since the meeting is being conducted via Zoom, due to the ongoing pandemic, the board will not be reconvened. An open session following the closed session. Instead, this meeting will be adjourned upon completion of the closed session. And will someone make a motion for the school board to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D David one zero five subdivision three parentheses B. And to immediately adjourn the meeting upon completion of the closed session.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Brittany? Do you have a second? We have a second by Brenda? Any discussion? There are no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, I'll be roll call, Brittany?
Hi.
Anne? Greg?
Hi.
Brenda? Mike? I. Motion carries and we'll, we'll move into a closed session. Thanks, everybody.